Good afternoon. This is May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty P. M. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Ms. Caroline Henigan.
Father, the things I had planned to pray for for our city tonight seem trivial when we think about the fact that there are families in Uvalde whose histories have been forever altered. So tonight, Lord, we pray for the parents, grandparents, siblings, and others impacted by the senseless evil of today's acts. Lord, we ask for the peace that only you can give, that peace that passes all understanding. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Henigan. Definitely want to uplift the families. Okay, we will now move on to item three. A. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion from Mr. Childs, a second from Ms. Henigan? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item four. Citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that is on my list is Daniel Finley. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Daniel Finley. I live at twenty-five oh-seven Fairway Drive. Thank you, Council Mayor, for listening to my comments. I wanted to bring up that my family and I moved into on to Fairway Drive in November, just before Thanksgiving, and we love the neighborhood. We have wonderful neighbors and a wonderful experience. The only concern as a parent with small kids and seeing other small kids in the neighborhood is that the strip of road between the Monterey Cut Through and Sunset Drive is very, very heavily trafficked of people coming either from the highway into town or from neighborhoods further away from town into the center of town towards Sunset. And with two small kids, the speed that's happening at is concerning. And I know it has been for a while because talking to neighbors who have lived in the community for quite some time, they have voiced the same concern that this has been going on for quite a long time. And I just want my kids to be able to play and not be super paranoid that every car that's going to cut through the neighborhood is going to be going really fast. And it's not every vehicle, but it is enough to be noticeable. And I just want to see something at least looked at. I know I spoke with Councilwoman Henigan, and she did talk with, I believe, the Chief of Police to have higher patrols done and traffic monitoring device put in place. And I think that's a wonderful start. Personally, I would love to see something passive long-term to ensure that if my kids are playing outside and there's not a patrol happening, that I still don't have to be concerned, whether it be speed bumps or an alternative to that that I may not be aware of. It is such a short stretch of road that it wouldn't take a whole lot to install those and maintain those. And I think that would be something great because speed bumps are always working. They're never on lunch, or they're never on vacation, or there's not having to respond to something else. They're in place, and they're always in place. And I know that regardless of what time of day we're outside, it's going to be an effective solution. That was really all I had to say today. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the nicest request for a speed bump I've ever got.
Absolutely.
Man, most of the time it's way worse, so thank you. I'm about to go get some concrete myself. All right, next we have Mr. Jay David DeRozier. Please come forward, state your address in three minutes.
My name is Dave DeRozier. I live in thirty-eight fifty-three Cockman Street. I've been before you in the past seeking help for disabled fire hydrant on my street. Just wanted to tell you that it's been fixed and to say thank you. I think you deserve the thanks if you listen to me complain about it. And I also especially want to point out system manager, Trey Hand. Jay, I saw him out there personally with the workers, and it looks like a good job has been done. Fortunately, we haven't had a fire, so I've been able to test it, but I just wanted to come and say thank you for the work.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Jay, and to all the city staff. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address city council? Okay, if not, we will move on to city announcements, city staff announcements. Mr. Coons?
Ms. Brenner.
I'm sorry, Ms. Manasco?
Followed by Jay. He gone after them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Katie Venable, and I'm the children's librarian. We'll be kicking off our summer reading program the first time in person since COVID with a Scholastic Book Fair, May thirty-first through June eleventh, and that is sponsored by the Friends of the Orange Public Library. Registration will begin on May thirty-first. There will be programming for birth through kindergarten and first through sixth grade. Our first program will begin on June eighth, and the programs will conclude with a carnival on June twentieth.
Thank you.
Great. Sounds great.
Also, we have two other programs that registration will begin on Tuesday. Our Young Adult Reading Program for grades seven through eleven, and that's on Tuesday evenings from five to six-thirty. And then this year, we're going to do an adult summer challenge, like an adult reading program. It won't be an in-person type thing. They'll sign up, get a register, get kind of like a bingo sheet, and do different things and earn points, get in a drawing for a prize.
That's neat.
We have a couple of year-round programs. We have adult coloring on Thursdays, and that's just anybody over the age of eighteen wanting to get out and be around grown-ups. And then on Thursday evenings, we have Family Game Night. And then wrapping up the summer, we have our Ocean Adventure Escape Room. We'll be setting it up at the end of July and starting reservations, and then it'll run the whole month of August.
Awesome. Wow. All right, thank you. Thank you so much to the library staff. Great job.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, just a few brief comments. This past weekend, we had our D S R A Drag Boat Races event. There was a field of forty-eight racers that came in from the states of Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, and a couple of others. But I do want to acknowledge a few things. Number one, without your support from a funding standpoint, we can't put on an event of this magnitude. Three local hotels had room blocks as a result of it. But I do want to acknowledge our C V B staff, even though they're taking some much-needed time off after working a full weekend. Leanne Dallas, Brandy Judeece, and Hillary Grabett, but also the other city departments throughout the city that not only prep the grounds, get us where we need to be from a logistics standpoint, but actually manage the event as well. And all city departments are involved in an endeavor from processing purchase orders, making sure the checks are printed. It just takes a lot of motion to put on an event of this magnitude. Also, want to acknowledge Sheriff Lane Mooney and the Orange County Sheriff's Office because they provide river security as a federal navigable waterway, because we have to process permits not only with the U. S. Coast Guard on the Texas side, but in Baton Rouge for the Louisiana Wildlife and Fisheries Department. In addition to that, Acadian Amelies is on site the entire weekend. Fortunately, it was without incident this past weekend, even with weather conditions and wind conditions this past weekend. So it was a successful event. They're excited about coming back. It's one of their better venues with all the concrete that we have at the boat ramp. There were some slight delays because of logistics Sunday, but overall, it was a very successful event. So that's number one. Number two, I want to pivot to July fourth. So please save the date because our C V B staff is working with other departments throughout the city to sponsor a Kids Activities Afternoon along with a concert at the Riverside Pavilion near the boat ramp, and we're working with Sky Wonder as well as Westport Marine in terms of the launch site. Monday, July fourth, seven P. M. Concert followed by a nine o'clock spectacular fireworks show. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of staff. That was after I had a chance to go out there, and it was really awesome to see those boats doing their thing. I don't know if I would ever do it, but it was fun to watch them do it. Okay, on to item six. Six A. Consider a motion appointing blank as Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, as at each year, we take a look at who's going to be the Mayor Pro Tem for the coming year. So, you know, again, as I recommend that y'all have a little discussion before anybody makes a motion, but it's up to y'all.
Is there any discussion?
No.
If there's no discussion, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that Paul Burge be the Mayor Pro Tem for the coming year.
I'll second.
Okay, so far, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Burge.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven. Consider agenda. April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes and May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion from Ms. McKenna, a second from Mr. Bailey? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, next up, A. Presentation. We have a presentation from my friend and sister, Ms. Terry Woodson, with Waste Management regarding her retirement, with introduction of her replacement, Tiana Smith, Public Sector Solutions Manager, and David Smith, the new Route Manager. Ms. Woodson?
Well, hello, everybody.
Hello.
And I'm not, I'm not going to cry, but thank you for the opportunity for a few moments tonight. Since nineteen ninety-six is the best I could figure out, that's when I started working with the City of Orange. And it was, it's been an honor to work with you for Waste Management and to be part of the family here and part of your team. I've enjoyed playing that small part in your city, and getting to know your residents have been amazing. It's like this is my second home, and I can say that more, though, about just people I've met in the area. So it's been with Waste Management twenty-eight years. I've worked with Waste Management, and it's been wonderful, but it's also been a blessing to work with the City of Orange. To ensure that the City of Orange remains top-notch with Waste Management, one of the things that I did on my resignation letter is I asked to be able to help pick the person that replaced me, but train that person, and I offered the flexibility of giving ninety days plus if needed. So I'm a great honor when I get to represent and present to you Tiana Smith, my colleague. She's amazing. She's been in our department for five years, two years prior to that, working in our commercial sales department. Over the next few weeks and months, or months, well, I say that because it's under forty days, so it's next few weeks, and you'll see more of her and less of me. But I do want you to know, I appreciate everything and every opportunity that y'all gave me to learn, but also to be just part of your events. And my last day is the end of June, but I'll still be up and around, and you won't be surprised to see me around. I have very good friends that live in West Orange, the McDonald's. I had to run, have a cup of coffee with them, so we wouldn't get in trouble because they saw my Jeep. They knew I was in town, sitting in front of City Hall. I get a message, Ms. Laverne, "Terry, we see your Jeep. Are you coming to the house?" So, but thank y'all so much. And I want to introduce Tiana. David is not here. He may not be able to make it because he is our active Route Manager. And David Smith was, is, an employee of Waste Management for many years. He has been a driver in your city. He picked up, he was one of our A S L drivers. He's worked in rolloff. He has worked in commercial, and he has been promoted to Route Manager. So I was so excited to meet him. He is an amazing young man, so we'll get him in here next time that we're able to get him in here to meet y'all. So we were just pretty excited that he worked his way up to Route Manager. So, but again, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, thank you and congratulations on your retirement. We hate to see you go, but we definitely honor you and thank you for all that you've done. I'll tell you, one of the greatest things that I was able to be a part of with you was, and all the things that we've done here on city council, we've been through hurricanes and COVID, then, of course, the great COVID Waste Management debacle.
Yes.
But, but you showed up, and you answered questions, and you gave answers. And in a situation like that, that's what people want to see, and it, it made my heart smile because then I could deflect some of the, towards you. But, no, I'm joking. But no, thank you for always being honorable, and we honor you, and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And Ms. Tiana, you've got some big shoes to fill, but I know you're going to be just fine. Thank you both. Okay, on to item nine. Final reading. Consider an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the City of Orange zoning map a part of Chapter twelve, Planning and Zoning of the two thousand Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, changing the zoning classification of abstract one-seven-two Daniel Sinclair survey tract zero-seven-seven, also known as five-forty East Luttrell Drive, located in Orange County, Texas, from I D C Interstate Development Corridor Zoning District to M U Z B Mixed Used Zoning District, providing for the official zoning map of the City of Orange, Texas, to deflect such change, providing for an effective date, providing for severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and making certain findings relative thereto. The first reading was May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Knoll?
The planning and zoning information voted five to zero to recommend approval. This is partly located at Simmons Drive and I-ten.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes, and thank you, Mr. Knoll. Item ten A. Consider a resolution approving an E D C Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Piney Woods Sanitation, two thousand four Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-zero, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Trey Hand?
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up agenda item to the E D C meeting that was held earlier. So we've met the sixty-day waiting period. The E D C formally approved that motion. Now it turns over to you as a council. We'll do a final reading in two weeks, and then we'll be able to work through executing the agreement. I would share that Mike Wilson, who is the project manager, was with us earlier. They're targeting possibly December of this year as a project completion date, and I do want to mention that this project is in Cove, one of three projects that we've worked. So anyway, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Sir. So do we have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve in the Cove.
In the Cove. Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
For those who don't know, that is one of Ms. McKenna's areas, and she's very excited. So we all are excited as well. Thank you, Mr. Trey Hand.
He's making a comeback.
Making a comeback. Ten B. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to K Two Services LLC in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy for bid number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-five Sewer Water Communications for the City of Orange in connection with American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Mr. Ingram?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we have the wastewater plant and the lift stations are two different communication devices. One of them does the recording history. It just throws out alarm. The one that's in the wastewater plant that we just completed was V T Skoda. It actually has a historian in it that every keystroke is recorded, and every issue and every alarm is recorded. So what we're doing is we're moving the old to the new. So we have one system across the system.
Gotcha. That's great. And this helps us in case of any kind of EPA requirements or any type of inquiries from them. We can show proof of what we've done and how we've handled it?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's awesome.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ingram?
No.
Both here.
Do we have a, we have a motion for Mr. Bailey, a second from Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
Item eleven A. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, as presented by Brooke Watson and Company, P L L C, as required by Section three point one-four of the Charter of the City of Orange. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. This, our annual audit is complete, and our financials are completed, and I want to introduce John Watson, which is partner with Brooks Watson, our auditors, and he will present our city's annual financial statement.
Thank you, Cheryl, Mayor, Council. So as Cheryl said, we recently completed the audit over the year ended September thirty, two thousand twenty-one. You all have a bound report in front of you. If you flip it open, you'll have a handout that looks like this here. You can follow along on the screen as well. Plan to go over high points of the audit and results for the year. So the audit was conducted consistent with U. S. GAGAS, that's generally accepted government auditing standards. A GAGAS audit is going to follow a three-phased approach. First phase is the planning phase. That's where we try to pick areas that most susceptible of risk of error fraud. They call it a risk-based approach. Fieldwork phase is where we actually test those results. We vouch it to underlying evidence. We corroborate information with third parties through confirmation. And then conclusion reporting is the last phase. That's where if we find differences, we propose audit adjustments. We determine why those differences existed, and then we prepare those reports that y'all have in front of you in a couple of letters. I'll touch on them at the end. So brief summary that any audit should follow that approach. The report itself, there are seven sections to it. The first section is an introductory section. That's got a letter of transmittal from management, describes current year activities as well as forward-looking information. Next section's the audit opinion, so that's from us. It describes whether the financial statements are consistent with U. S. GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, or if there are any modifications. After that is the management's discussion and analysis. That has current year results, comparison with prior year, some explanation over those differences year-over-year, capital asset, debt activity. It'll explain all those kind of important parts. Basic financials follow that. They're presented on a government-wide level, so it shows the capital asset and debt activity, then a fund level, which is more consistent with how you budget. Back of the report, you've got your pension schedules and budget schedules, so you can see your pension positions year-over-year. We'll take a look at that. You've got your budget schedules. We'll look at how your budget, how you did relative to your budget. And then the very back of the report is the statistical section. Great place to look, a lot of trend information, ten-year trends. You can see where your city was ten years ago and where it's come today in a lot of areas. So that's everything within that, that big report you got in front of you. So I mentioned the independent auditor's report, that letter from us toward the front. There's four types of reports you could receive. Unmodified is the best. Modified, disclaimed, and adverse would be the worst. The city received an unmodified opinion, so that is a good thing. That is the highest level assurance the CPA can provide, really a testament to city staff. Cheryl Zito, in particular, just does a great job working with us, getting us everything we ask for. I think we're pretty thorough auditors and, and just really appreciate all the effort to get us what we want. So some financial highlights. Again, this information is as of September thirty, twenty-one, and for the year ended the same. First bullet here, total assets exceeded total liabilities at year-end, seventy-nine million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. This was an overall increase in net position for the year of about nine point one million. Some ARPA grant funds were a big contributor there, increases in sales taxes. We'll look at that. Third bullet, city's governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of twenty-four million one hundred and forty-five thousand, which resulted, was an increase of three million four hundred and seventy-three thousand for the year. Last item I have for you, unassigned fund balance in the general fund was sixteen million sixty-eight thousand. That's sixty-nine percent of your annual general fund expenditures, so it's an important benchmark to think about. So this doesn't include your restricted funds. These are unassigned, so available to spend for those future expenditures. We typically suggest three to six months, so at sixty-nine percent, you're sitting over six months, closer to nine months, so you have a very healthy reserve there. If you ever get under three months or two months, that's pretty lean and below any guidance as far as how much you should have set aside. So healthy fund balance there. So this pie chart here is a picture of your governmental revenues. These are your governmental activities, so it doesn't include your water and sewer. You get a picture of where your revenues are coming from. So first bullet, total governmental revenues were thirty-three million one hundred and twenty-three thousand in the current year. Prior year was twenty-six million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And the increase there was primarily grant funds, ARPA grant funds, which I'm sure you all are aware of, and sales taxes, both significant increases year-over-year in those two areas. On the expense side, so where were you spending the money on governmental activities? Current year was twenty-four million four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Prior year was twenty-three nine, twenty-three million nine hundred and sixty thousand, so a small increase there. Majority of your expenses were public safety at fifty percent. Public works make up twenty-three percent. General government seventeen percent, and culture and recreation at nine percent. Here's a more granular look at your governmental activities. This is by fund. On the left column here is your general fund. That's where most of your activity occurs. That's what is feeding into that unassigned fund balance I mentioned earlier. What I've circled here is just the net change, so we like to look at the results and make sure they're working how we would expect. So the general fund, we see a surplus bottom left here of about one point seven million, so that's good. That's what's feeding into that, about a nine-month unassigned reserve that I mentioned earlier. Everything else, debt service funds operating at a deficit, but that's mostly timing. The fund balance is still positive, so a timing of a debt payment can impact that, so no concerns there. Capital projects fund, it's negative. It's going to be negative when they're spending. A lot of times, you'll have a debt inflow in a prior year, and then you'll spend those funds the next year, so nothing alarming there. Really, same with the grants fund. That'll have a revenue to offset that in, in years to come. So everything's working consistent with expectations on those funds. I mentioned toward the back of the report, there's a budget-to-actual schedule. This is a summary of those results for your general fund, again, where most of your activity occurs. The left column is your final budget after all amendments. So after all amendments, you budgeted a deficit of about two million ninety-six thousand in that bottom left. The actual is in the middle, and then on the right is the variance. We can look at top right. Your revenue variance was positive two million ninety-four thousand. The majority of that was sales tax. Sales tax exceeded your budget expectations by quite a bit, as well as some grant, grant revenues that exceeded expectations. Expenditures were under budget, so your actual were under your budget by eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. So the combination of these and the other financing sources fed into a positive overall budget variance of three million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand relative to your final budget. Okay, so that is all the governmental side, tax side. This is your proprietary fund side, your water and sewer fund and sanitation fund. What we like to look at here is operating income and that overall change. These funds should be paying their own way, and that's what we see here. We see positive operating income, close to seven hundred thousand for the water and sewer, and then positive for sanitation as well. So again, these are working consistent with our expectations. If they're ever operating in a deficit, we want to understand why because they should pay their own way, not an issue here. Okay, just a couple more slides for you. These are, so you have two pensions at your city. You've got a T M R S pension which covers the majority of your city workers, and that is at the top. I've circled the funded position, so this is comparison of your asset relative to the liability, so it's a percentage. Then the bottom is your fire fund pension, and talk about the, or sorry, firefighter net pension liability. So if we just look at the, the funding, we'll look at the T M R S at the top, red circle first. You're funded at ninety-six percent, so that's really good. Average in two thousand twenty in a study nationwide of government pensions was about seventy-five percent. So ninety, over ninety percent is well above average, so very well-funded pension for T M R S for that side. And we can see conversely, the firefighter pension at the bottom, prior year was fifty-one percent. Current year, it's, it's increased to fifty-seven percent. I know there's been changes, increases in contribution rates, so you're, you're realizing some of that, but that is below average as stated, so ideally that will, that will continue to increase. So those are your two different pensions. One is well above average, and one is below average. Stop clicking on me. Well, I will keep it going with my handout. I lost my, there we go. Okay, well, there's not much there anyway. So in conclusion, so that's everything I want to talk about with the report. There's a couple of letters. First letter, it goes over a lot of standard communications, discusses our independence, discusses most important areas of the, of the footnotes to look at, really nothing unique to the city. Also, the audit adjustments are listed in the back, so anytime an auditor proposes adjustments, they should be listed in a letter provided to council. Those are listed there. Less than ten adjustments for a city is really good, definitely on the low end from the city's eye audit. So So again, that, that's a testament to your accounting department and the job they're doing. Other letter, as we encounter things, internal control things, we're gonna make suggestions. There's always new accounting guidance coming in. There's a couple of new areas. The ARPA funds is unique, that hasn't been around, so just making, so there's some citations related to that. There's also some lease guidance coming down. I talked with Cheryl about as to how to adopt that new accounting treatment. So those are in the, the other letters. So just a brief overview of those letters. That is everything I wanted to share. With that, I'll answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions?
What I always ask auditors is, no fraud and abuse?
Nothing, no, we didn't identify any.
That's what we want to hear. And I don't know, I'm not a CPA or an auditor or anything, but it looks like a healthy financial report for the city as a person who's responsible for fiduciary stuff in the city. Am I right with that?
Yeah, yeah, and I, hopefully, everything I went over looks good. I would say the one area in this has been, you know, carried forward for, for a while is that firefighter pension. It's, it's on the right track from, from my perspective. And that can all change based on investment outlook. You know, when we have a bad year in the stock market, all these investments are, are in the market, so there's gonna be ebbs and flows, but that would be the only area. But that's, that's kind of been a, a, a long-term issue for the city. And they've been making changes to increase that contribution rate to try to get that better funded. But everything else, nothing but kind of positive outlook is what I see.
Thank you.
What is the number that we're shooting for on that firefighter's pension?
Well.
It's supposed to be about 75% or, I can't remember where it was.
You know, probably your actuary that does it would probably be the best person to ask for that. I, I can tell you, I, I just resort to the averages. You know, what I can tell you is, one of the things we get that's not in this report, but we do it as part of our test, is we get it, basically get a, what do they call it? A single discount rate test is, is what it's called. But it's, it's a basically cash flow projection for that, for that pension. It's just saying, here's who's all gonna get paid over the next 50 years, and here's what we anticipate coming in. And what we're making sure is that it pays its own way. There was one year in particular, about three years ago, that it didn't. So with some changes, now it is paying its own way, but it's still, it's a, it's thinner than it, you know, than it is if you were in an average position, say that 75%. So, so if you, if you can get to that 70%, that's where you're talking about, you're hitting that, that benchmark of average. And, you know, Moody's and S&amp;P, they put out guidance as far as that funded ratio too. I've seen them say, I think 70 to 80% they consider well-funded, 90% and above, like we saw with TMRS is well above average, so.
Okay.
Yep.
The two other things I wanted to bring up with Ms. Zito can confirm the question. So when we look at the red around the operating income loss on page 10 for the, under the proprietary funds, I want to say, wasn't that, a lot of that was due to the, the big freeze, where we lost a lot of lines? We had a lot of ruptures. Wasn't that, isn't that where that came from, that issue? But like for the overall department, wasn't that where that loss came from? We had to move some funds? Okay, when it said operating income loss, that was a positive?
So the loss is in? Loss is in parentheses, so because it's positive, it was income?
Oh.
Sorry, sorry about that, that's.
No, it's okay, because I was like, I knew we had some issues from the freeze, but I didn't, okay.
Yeah, so, so I imagine, you know, your income probably would have been higher without those, those costs absorbed, but you were still in a positive income position.
Okay. And the last thing is, one of the things I wanted to touch on before we get off of it is, a lot of times when we do these reports, you will hear where the city has the 69% of the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah.
And a lot of times people will hear that and say, well, why don't they spend it on this and that? Well, one thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of the public is, you saw in 2009, 2020, where at the last minute, that hurricane turned and destroyed Lake Charles. That's what this money is for, isn't, I mean, heaven forbid that ever happens to us, and I pray that it doesn't. But having a healthy reserve is what makes sure that we can bounce back and get this city up and running. So it's not for us to use it for, you know, purchasing new vehicles or for doing other things that we would like to do. It's to make sure that we're operating and giving the citizens what they pay for. So I just wanted to bring that up. Other than that, thank you. And I always look to see if there's any FBI agents when we get this report once a year, that I'm not going in jail. And nobody showed up this year, so thank y'all.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Congratulations to you and your department. And thank you, Mr. Watson as well. We appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mr. Childs? Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Item 11B, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation's annual financial report and audit report as presented by Brooks Watson and Company, PLLC, for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2021. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor, this is just to acknowledge the receipt of the EDC's audit report that the auditor presented earlier at the board meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item 11C, consider a motion approving the appointment of Devon Williams to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board for a two-year term with effective dates of May 24th, 2022 through May 24th, 2024. Mr. Trey Hand.
Yes, sir. So Mayor and Council, we're happy to share that we did receive this application. Ms. Devon Williams serves as our EDC Board President, recently appointed. And we're happy to accept her, subject to your approval as we move forward with additional CDB activity. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Williams. We appreciate you. Item 11D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of two Texas State Library and Archives Commission Community Advancement Package grants in the combined amount of $9,990 for purchasing supplies and materials for teen services and analog outreach, the children's room. Ms. Manasco.
Exactly what it said. We received these two grants and will be getting supplies and equipment for teen services. These are not for books. They're just for actual services like programming. And then for different items, different equipment for the children's room.
That's great.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Ennigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Ms. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Manasco. Looking forward to the summer services as well. Okay, on to item 11E, update on hiring process for the City of Orange Fire Chief. Mr. Bailey.
Do we have an update?
Interviews.
The interviews were conducted.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I assume the interviews were concluded.
Interviews were, some interviews were held and now I'm doing my due diligence and as regards to that.
When do you expect to bring us the name?
When that is concluded.
So you're not setting a time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. City Manager Report, Mr. Combs.
Monday is Memorial Day. City offices will be closed, but more importantly, you know, I ask everybody to take a moment to remember those men and women who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country, and that's what Memorial Day is all about.
City Council Report, start with Mr. Bailey.
Well, along with the prayer that Ms. Caroline had, I want to say that anytime 14 children die at the hands of a moron, because he was able to get a gun, something's wrong. Something's wrong. And for anyone to think that we're above it not happening here, you're sadly mistaken. There's always idiots out there that want to see if they can get a higher body count. So with that, my prayers go out to all those and the lawmen that had to deal with that. In my years, I have dealt with a few children dying, and I would not wish that on my worst enemy. So God bless them.
I'll keep a simple prayers for you, Valdi.
Ms. Salter?
Yes. Also prayers, we have so much going on in this world, from the senseless killing at the Tops Grocery Store to the war that we're facing, to the killing today of the children. I ask everyone to just pray and keep everybody lifted in prayer. I want to thank everybody for coming out today. A few things I wanted to say, on June the 11th, volunteers will be going to the Hollywood Community Cemetery. So for all those who are willing to come out, come out and help. And women can help as well. The women able to walk around and pick up trash and the flowers that have been displaced off of some of the cemetery plots.
Terry, you did say you needed people with weed eaters and push mowers, correct?
Yes, sir. And they also have additional equipment.
Okay.
If you can just come out, if you know how to use a weed eater, they will have some additional lawn equipment present if you don't have any to bring. Just bring yourself. Don't forget, today is Election Day. The polls are open till 7:00 PM. If you are not aware of actually where to go and vote, because some polls are closed. So you can call the Orange County Election Administration Office at 882-7973. They will be there until 7:00 PM to answer any questions. Enjoy Memorial Day. Have a safe one. And if you do anything, do it responsibly. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McKenna?
Yes, go vote. Vote early and often and if you can get out there and vote if you haven't yet, it would be the best thing that you can do. Because those brave men and women that died for us for that privilege, that honors them. So we want to honor them. We want to honor them for Memorial Day. We want to honor them today, so let's all go vote.
Okay, Ms. Ennigan?
Okay, was contacted just this afternoon by Mr. Jarvis Buckley of the Cove Community about an address at 902 Arkansas, and I will email you the details on that. Okay?
Mr. Burge?
I was contacted by a lady in Brownwood on the corner of Fourth and Bilbo. She is concerned with all the rats and the varmints coming out of that property into her, her yard. And so she wanted, Fourth and Bilbo, yes, so told her I would bring it to the table.
That all?
That's all.
All right. Well, thank everyone for coming. Definitely continue to pray for those who are experiencing what they're experiencing. It was a wonderful past weekend. I want to thank everybody that took part in the boat races and look forward to all the wonderful events that are coming, all the wonderful projects that are seeing, we're seeing come to fruition. I thank you all for this opportunity to continue to serve. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
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 Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourn.
All right.
No sessions.